I mean, it's, it has to be in some district. You know, on the map, it has to, when you divide up the village on a zoning map, it's gonna be in a district somewhere. But the Charter says it can only be for that public use.
And is, and that district, how does it designate for the Green Belt? In other words, what does the Green Belt designation?
What do you mean?
Well, you're saying it has to show up in a district somewhere on the map, and I'm just asking.
Well, Green Belt district is-
That's my thought.
Is a district of-
It's itself.
Literally is green, anything will be green.
Okay, but it's identified as what it is.
Mm-hmm. And for what it's worth, early on in this process, working with Todd, you know, they, one of the very initial drafts, long time ago, they had changes to the Green Belt district, nothing of any substance, but just changing some wording, changing, and we told them back then, you can't do that. This may be a total zoning code overhaul, but you can't touch the regulations on the Green Belt district, because the Charter says.
I read somewhere where Green Belt can be developed for recreational or public use.
Right, that's already in your zoning code.
Yeah.
I mean, that's my point, is what the Charter says is, you can't change that now, without putting it-
To develop.
And then, and if you could just help me out, as far as location goes, what, um, what does it designate now, a new zoning code, the common area as? Right, but I mean-
Or how does it define commons?
How's it defined?
I mean, are you asking that how does it describe, like, the boundaries of commons?
Right, when we were just talking about it being, well, not, not the boundaries. We were just talking about definition and being consistent with the zone, versus being contrary to it. So I just wondered how it's being described now, if it is.
That's a good point, I mean, is the commons defined somewhere? Because commons, I mean, we know what the commons is, but-
I don't believe so.
Unless it's defined somewhere, a commons could be, uh, every green space, yeah, behind the middle, behind the building building, and all that. I mean, if somebody wanted to make an argument there, but unless we've got it defined by those four rows. Somewhere.
Well, don't we approve the map, and isn't it defined on the map, as this is commons?
Is there any map? I, I mean, it's currently in the R1 zone, which permits publicly owned parks and playgrounds.
I think it's, yeah, R1 right now, but if we change it to the, the new proposed, it's no longer going to be R1.
No, it'll be-
Well, no, but-
It'll be VC, but, you know, the same thing applies, that-
Yeah.
You can change.
Same description, as far as being, all I can say as far as defining the commons, every map I've seen labels the commons, so I, I don't know.
And so I don't think there'd be language in here, but we're going to approve the map as well. I think that's the definition.
But, but the map doesn't define that area or that space.
Well, I think it's marked, though, isn't it?
No, I think it's the whole, the whole village center is a larger entity not defining the common. And I just, it just seems like we should have it somewhere where we're saying, this is the common, as it, you know.
For the map we're gonna approve, I don't have a problem with approving it as village center. But should we, I guess the question is, should we, on the official zoning map that we approve, mark that area bounded by Eswin Indicott infield and Farragut as the commons? So it's sitting there on the map.
I think that ought to be on the Charter, really.
Well, that's a different discussion for another day. And we have an opportunity to look at the output of the Charter, and see what they have to say about the Green Belt. But, um-
We would want it both places, so I think on this, we would, I agree with you, we would want it defined in-
Yeah, but, you know, just starting around the map is not that important, and once it's in the Charter, that's locked.
True, true, and it's something I would think to note, to bring up to the-
Yeah.
Well, I mean, it sounds like it already is in the Charter, it's-
Yeah, but it's not really defined. If you drove into the Green Hills and looked at the Charter and said, oh, where's the commons? Looked around for it, and there doesn't appear to be any documents or anything else defining where it is.
I think there are, I'll just have to spend some time looking for it. But what's our purpose on this? Just to identify, do we want to identify the golf course, and the municipal bill? Are we just trying to identify things?
I think, well, yes, we are trying to identify things, and, and the common area, since it relates so strongly to the Charter and the Green Belt, I think calling that out, and why not? Go ahead and designate the golf course differently as well, at least it doesn't-
Well, I mean, the golf course is, what, R1 now? And we continue to be R1.
So it's no need to identify that.
Well, and, and, you know, I guess I could make the same argument with the commons. It's not really, there's no argument about what constitutes the commons, I wouldn't think.
Well, I think we'd wanna, I understand it between us and people that live here, but I think we'd wanna have-
Well, I, my suggestion is that we mark the zoning map to mark that area as, identify it as the commons, still retain its current zoning, or put the VC, you know, it'll be in the VC, but we'll just call it the commons, that way-
The wedge covered in both.
It won't be a mystery.
Mr. Halter, um, do you, are you trying to say that you feel better if it's labeled the R1 that is now, or commons, or just to put a denomination on it of some sort, or?
I think it, to Bud's point, I think it's good to call it out on our map. And then, um, if it's, if it's set in stone through the Charter, which it sounds like it is, that's, that's fine. I think hopefully they'll, it would be defined as far as this physical space in the Charter as well, so that it's not in, you know, in history or memory.
I would feel more comfortable just to give it as R1, to make sure that was no other possibility there. But if that commons is decided as such, and nothing will happen except being commons, I'm okay with that as well, I just don't like to leave it as city, uh, center.
Does it, which you're, you're-
It doesn't, the truth is, it doesn't matter if it's R1, if it's B3, Village Center, it's R1 right now, but you can't build a house on it, even though-
It's R1.
Houses are permitted as R1.
So there's no additional guarantees if it's R1 versus Village Center?
No, no, no.
No, I understand, but I'm just saying that the-
There are none, it's really, it's kind of a senseless discussion deciding what, you know, which-
Label.
Zoning label we're gonna give it, as long as everybody knows what is the commons. And I think if we mark the map, say, this is the commons, then it'll be clear.
That's probably the most important thing, is that it's, the Charter says the commons can only be the commons.
Is the Charter, are you and committee finished? Did I hear Chris Shins in there, the document?
They, their committee sunsets on the sixth February.
Committee?
Committee sunsets, it ceases to exist.
Okay. Well, that's just something-
Six months after, at that point, and so it's, it's just there.
All right, good.
All right, moving on.
Okay, um, Todd's here now, so that's quite on the, are you ready for us to jump into some items for you, or? We just got started on the items that council actually had already voted on, but we had number three, and we were talking about some clarifications on the Village Center district. But one of the, actually, we already spent time on some of those, why don't we jump into some of the new stuff to, like home occupations, or would you, you all right starting with that one, Todd? Um, we've had some questions, just for clarification, in terms of what types of businesses would be included or excluded? I, I believe I heard somebody saying once, would people who sell Avon have to, you know, would that be a home business? Um, and then the other piece of that is, will whoever, whoever this falls on, will existing home occupations be given a period of time to comply? Our couple of questions.
Well, um, I mean, ultimately, it's gonna come down on enforcement, and how you wanna deal with that. But, um, I mean, I think it's the characteristics of home occupation is really what the issue is, not so much identifying an architect, or a, an IT, you know, person who does that kind of work. It's, it's more of the characteristics of, do they have people coming to their home? Do they create a parking issue? Are they storing a whole lot of things on their property? So, it's typically with home occupations, you don't go through and actually list uses. I mean, there was a time when I, I mean, I've seen cases like that, but it's really the impacts on the community that you're concerned about. So, um, I'm trying to get mine. So if you look through that, um, I mean, you, what I would say is, if these need to be edited to deal with something specific, or something common that you're aware of-
What picture, or where you're at?
Uh, page fifty-three.
Fifty-three.
Yeah, that's a good point, it sounds like, to be able to name every possible scenario that could be a home occupation would be pretty difficult.
So what it says is, basically, you can't expand the building by more, or, no, see, I'm sorry. You can't use more than twenty-five percent of the floor area of the dwelling unit for the home occupation, clearly subordinate to the primary use as a house. You can't change the footprint of the building, or add on to it specifically to accommodate a home occupation. So it says you, you know, one vehicle at a time could be there visiting you. And there's, those are the, you can't have out, explain, display things outside. Can't expand your parking area to accommodate it. And then the last one is kind of a catch-all, it has a whole bunch of, you know, things in there that, you know, identifies all the characteristics. So I don't think any, what, any of them specifically says you can't do Avon. You know, it doesn't say that, I mean, I heard someone ask the question, but-
Well, I, you know, I read three, and it basically says, only commodities made on the premises may be sold on the premises. On E, nine-one-E.
Yeah, that sounds-
Okay, so that suggests, but, you know, then again, Avon's not really a retail business where people come in and buy stuff, that's a, a door-to-door kind of-
I mean, I think what that's supposed to mean is like, an architect is drawing the plan, so you go there and you purchase services. You know, I mean, my mom was anyone that I was growing up, I mean, people are dropping off orders and picking up orders, but, you know, it's not one of those things where you have, you tell everyone to come at ten o'clock on Saturday to pick it up. You know, it's a fairly infrequent kind of thing, and, you know-
But doesn't it, as this is read, only commodities made on the premises may be sold on the premises, seems to be a weak link in this description? Because Avon, when, as far as I know, they don't make Avon at all, but, um, so do we just strike that?
I mean, this is, I mean, this is one of the things, I mean, there's people who, there's strange businesses that it's hard to write a rule for everything. You know, people who, um, are kind of, I've, I've heard of people who are kind of serving as almost like a wholesale of goods, you know, and they're buying twenty flat-screen monitors and selling them at whatever price, and-
So that's the purpose of this, is to stop that flipping, uh, wholesale?
I mean, I think it's just supposed to say that it's not a retail business, you know, that's really the whole issue, so, um-
Well, I guess the idea is just to prevent some entire street from being converted into a retail, a group of retail businesses.
Yeah, I mean, the things you gotta remember, this is not, um, one, you meet one of the standards, you meet all the standards, so the one that says you don't generate more than one car at a time, to me, addresses the question of intensity. So if I'm selling something that requires a high volume of customers, and the rule says you have one car at a time, you know, I suppose you can have people walking as well, but, but, um-
So Todd, when you say that they have to meet all, you're saying that they have to meet all this criteria?
Yeah.
And where's that?
It says, subject to the following conditions. And the period under nine-five-one.
Home occupation should have certain law conditions, in addition to the standard provisions for the district. So they have to meet all the residential requirements of the district area, plus all this. So, I mean, uh-
I guess, and I know it's, it seems to be splitting hairs on it, and I'm sure that people want this to move faster than it is right now, but, um, you know, you can have a business where you sell stuff on eBay, for example, and you might end up with five, ten monitors. I personally don't care, as long as they're not in your front yard. Um, so I just, I think that that seems a little restrictive to me, and I don't think it would prevent it from happening. But on the other hand, I just would like to be more consistent, so that, um, that we, if someone overlaid an Avon business to this, we just have a couple places where we overlook a loose interpretation of that.
I have a suggestion, what if we were to just strike, and only commodities made on the premises may be sold?
Put a period in the end of use, and strike the rest of that? Do we have nods? How many nods do I have?
Yeah.
Any nods, okay.
Where did you put the period?
Have we discussed anything about the outside advertising, if you have CPA, AGDY, Simstress, things like that?
That's what I was gonna ask.
That's what concerns me, because historically in the United States, that has been permitted in a home for Simstress, CPA, insurance, um, I don't know, bookkeepers, um-
I think that's all fine, as long as you meet all these other conditions, and then, I would think our signage restrictions are-
Well, we have some already in the community that have to sign off, I wanted to say that.
A hundred degrees.
No, that's not in, that's not in this provision, then it would be under the sign chapter.
Right.
It doesn't sign to a group of people.
Well, but in our signage, we're not saying that you cannot have a sign. We're not discussing signs right now, that's, that's-
Well, I think it relates to the home-
It does, it does, it does relate to the home business, but as far as these things about the business, um-
Yeah.
Okay, also in, in G, it is indicated actually by Mrs. Kohler, where it indicates about the X-rays. X-rays radiation or electrical disturbances are not detectable to the normal senses, and can be harmful, and in here it indicates that they, as being detectable to normal senses, and I guess what you're saying is that they, it wouldn't be detectable.
Right, you cannot detect X-rays radiation.
If you have a ray-to-tel mission, you're generating X-rays within that television.
Okay.
That's part of that. Now about that, the consequence of the-
Yeah, but is that what that X-rays is referring to?
The way I read it, it says that you cannot have it, whether it's detect, detectable or not.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm all for saying you can't have it.
I think it says that in the first sentence.
And it is detectable with the right instruments.
But it, but it says or, it doesn't say and about being detectable. It says, no process, equipment, materials, or chemicals shall be used which create offensive noises, vibrations, smoke, dust, odor, heat, glare, X-rays, radiation, or.
So they're really talking about electrical disturbance, it's not about the rest? Okay, does that make sense?
It's called a-
So, any other issues with that?
No, I just wanted to go back to one sentence on page twelve, that says, um-
Page twelve?
Yes.
Let's get done with this one.
I know, but it's still about the home occupation. No display that will indicate from the exterior that the building is being utilized for any purpose other than of a dwelling.
Yeah, I, while you guys were talking about X-rays, I was, I was looking at the signage piece, and, um, I mean, there are some communities that say, you know, you could give them a small one-square-foot sign or something, like you said, Simstress or whatever.
Because there are some already here in the village that does have it. There's the WIT, Tony there, there is a home decoration on Burley Circle there. I mean, I just went around and looked at every different household, and it says in here, no display that will indicate from the exterior that the building is being utilized for any purpose other than of a dwelling. And that has been the livelihood for many people.
Well, that's, I don't think displaying sign is the same thing. You know, I, uh-
I think that's what it's alluded to, um, yeah, what, what, I mean, we can change that to eliminate that group. We can modify that.
Well, it, it seems like, it does open up a bigger question that leads to signs at a different point in the conversation, because we don't wanna open it up so that I can have a five-by-five sign on a house that says, you know-
You're primarily in a residential district, so do you really want signage?
Well, I was writing it from the perspective of, there's no signage on these buildings. If it's the community's preference to have it, and I can make the edits here fairly simple, we would adjust the unoccupation definitions. And I need to pay, because I know you don't wanna talk about signs separately, you wanna do this separately, but back on page one-fifty-two, um-
Let's get all this business sorted out now, while we can.
What I would do is I would go on page one-fifty-two, um, under, um, so that is under exemptions, which is twenty-one point twelve, and then we have on the D, what we could do is just modify that to say, size not exceeding two-square-feet of display surface area on a residence building, stating the occupants or the address, or, um, for a home occupation, something along those lines. Or identifying a home occupation.
You know, I see the question, though, if it's supposed to be something that doesn't generate foot traffic, why would we want it promoting, you know, residential area?
I think it could promote, um, within the guidelines, the foot traffic. I know, um, one of our neighbors on Delorean has a CPA, and has a sign, and I think that's someone, maybe you get two people a week or something, that may come by your home office.
And there's Mr. Purdy on the WIT, that has the AGDY and so forth, and they have been there forever. There's, like I say, interior design, very small sign, and the Burley Circle, I walk over there just looking, between the campers and everything else, and all the signs that were in the village as well, and this is the livelihood of those people.
I don't have a problem with the sign, as long as we put parameters on it, like Todd said, and make it small, and it's not offensive, but it's-
Two-square feet?
Two-square feet has to be attached to the house, or, so it's not in the yard, or something like that.
So Todd, would you call it?
Two-square feet is-
It's a one-by-two.
Two-square feet, in fact, a lot of communities say one-square foot.
Yeah, two-square foot, two-square foot.
I, I almost like one-square foot, because if you're talking to a house, and you have the address, just a little thing that says, here's something now. Yeah, one-square foot, but I also like, David said that, um, that, that is attached to the house, you know, that is on a free standing.
All right, let's see, let's try to figure out how to, to deal with this. Um, and then let's start with this sign, do we have another?
So we're gonna add to section one-twenty-one point twelve?
Yeah, is it E?
I think probably what did we do there is, yeah, add, add E.
E?
Okay.
Signs not exceeding one-square-foot of display surface on a residence building stating, uh, the name of the occupant.
Mayor, for what it's worth, when you call it, what's, what's in your existing zoning code right now?
In your sign code, in the exemption section, there is a sentence that says, assign not more than one-square-foot of display surface on a residential building stating merely the name and profession or occupation of the occupant.
Perfect.
That's in your existing code.
Bring it on, and that is E.
That's put in there-
What is that?
Uh, eleven-fifty-seven point oh-two of your existing code, that is a section on exemptions.
All right, so, we add that, there's nothing really in the other part on page fifty-three that needs to be changed. And, and under the definition on twelve, uh, it's been on secondary.
Remove the reference to, no identification.
And, I mean, the, the specific edit, I'd like to get that in place.
Or strike in that, section E, strike in that line?
We're adding the E, we're striking on the, on page twelve.
Oh, I'm sorry, we added it on page fifty-three.
Well, firstly, you know what, as I read it, as I read this, maybe the interpretation here, because we're gonna have an exemption that says you can do a sign, then maybe this is okay, because then it would reference something, displays of, something under the sign.
And that's, that's the way I read that, is display, like, if you had, uh, if you-
You know, say you-
Sold old car parts, would you have a display of old car parts in your front window?
Yeah, right, or if you, I don't know, you're a cabinet maker, and then on Saturdays you put a cabinet out in your front yard, people, you know, whatever, I mean, that's really what you wanna do. So maybe it's best to-
We leave the definition alone, put the exemption in twenty-one, whatever it was, and we can move along. Everybody happy with that, home occupations business?
Still.
All right, page fifty-nine, that's our next item of concern.
Uh, yeah, nine-point-ten-B, um, where it says the, shall be, it's referring to the step van, or chassis van, shall be permitted to be parked or stored in residence district without the approval of Board of Zoning Appeals. Does it need to say without the, without the approval from the Board of Zoning Appeals? Because that would be, that would be the appeal right, so that, do, does that need to be stated there?
Oh, I think it's just saying it just tells someone the process, but, um-
And I think that's probably helpful.
I mean, it's implied, if you remove the words-
Right.
Without the approval, I mean, I guess the point is that you can put that after every standard in.
Right.
So, I mean, that's, yeah, I don't think that's, that's probably, so just remove the words with, out, go forward.
Just, I know there's something else in that same area we had talked about before, did, I know I have a note to check other codes about the length, the twenty-two-foot length.
It's coming up on the question.
All right.
Okay, all right, still with that?
To remove that statement about reference to the, about residence district period strike without the approval from the Board of Zoning Appeals?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Fair enough.
Right, page seventy-three, regarding R2 setbacks, um, and Todd, I'm pretty sure that we have dealt with all these setbacks. That was one of the reasons why it took longer, then, you know, if you go back and people look at that, um, and it seems like the differences are in the multifamily setbacks, and-
Well, we, you know, we looked at this pretty closely, and the problem you have is that you have two zoning districts, basically, where almost all your, your, our houses are located in two districts. And the setback standards are all over the place. And the regulations that were written to control setbacks were written- And the regulations that were written to control setbacks were written after the vast majority of the houses in the village were built. And I, and the standard was, in my viewpoint, a convoluted approach to determining the setback. You, I had to search for it here real quick, but it was, you, you take, it's the width of the lot and you do an average, I mean, it doesn't give you a set number. So what we were trying to do is try to go back through the code, and I actually have some, some maps here where we looked and did the measurements on a lot of the things, a lot of different sections of the village. And, and, you know, like for instance, on one street, the, or one, one little area of the village, we have setbacks all in the same different district that are everywhere from eighty-four feet to five feet in the front yard. And they're nineteen, twenty, eighteen and a half, twenty-six. And, and in the newer parts of the village, like over on Junefield and in that area, they're a bit more severe. So what we were trying to do is, we waited and did some measurements and tried to come up with something that made sense. And, and so we, we suggested the numbers that are in there. And, and the, the, the thing is that, within a zoning district, you have to have uniform setbacks. So as far as what is codified, you can't say, you know, buildings of this age have this setback, and buildings of this style have this setback, because you have to have a uniform standard. And so there's absolutely no uniformity right now. So we were just trying to come up with a number that reflected the most frequent setback. So, so what we didn't want to do is create a bunch of very, of conforming structures, because, and in fact, what we did by changing the numbers, we actually reduced the number of buildings that actually probably were not compliant. So I'm not exactly sure what the, what the issue is. And given that the...
Well, I, I think it's, I think it's clarification, because, I mean, let's face it, there's a stretch of houses along Ashby that have very small setback. If, God forbid, one of those were to burn, and somebody went to rebuild, they're not...
Well, well, here's the thing, they wouldn't rebuild, they, they wouldn't be able to rebuild as they are today based on your existing code. Because the state, because of this, they don't, they would be, the standards, they'd probably have to go to the BCA and do some kind of, you know, fair...
Yeah, but, but the thing is, we're not going to force somebody to build something
Way back.
Way back, that's way different than everybody that's next to them.
Yeah, in fact, I think we might already have that covered through the, there's a average setback, I think, requirement. But we don't really have a lot of infill development, and you'd like to see more of that potentially, but most of those, I would suspect, are probably involved in a PV or something along those lines. I mean, I don't want to kind of be flip about it, but I don't really think that the setbacks in the code are really that big of a deal, because you have really no way into development.
Yeah, you know? Yeah, the setbacks in R2, it's, we've got to put a number, there's got to be a...
Well, the numbers are there.
Yeah, I mean, and that's, and they're there, but, you know, as opposed to the convolution formula, we've got a number. The number is representative of the, the bulk of the...
The number was not just pulled out of a hat.
Yeah, the number represents the bulk of the, the structures. There are going to be some that don't inform, but it doesn't mean that...
If, if we took, if we had taken the standard that was the least restrictive, so for the lots that had the biggest setbacks, and even used an average, you would have, it would have resulted in all of the other lots that were older having been, having a problem.
Right.
So what we basically tried to do is look at, really, for a lot of the older houses, and looked at those setbacks and set that, use that as the standard. So, and I, I didn't really know exactly what the issue was, so I could have been a bit more prepared, but I'm trying to find, I thought for sure we put something in here on average alignment or something. In fact, I thought that was something that we discussed. Does that ring a bell?
Yeah, well, I know, that was one of the things that I think, something like that that came out.
Average setback.
There was a formula that was basically what I call a floating setback, where it didn't really tell you what the setback would be. It was, there was more of a formula where it said, "Pick this many houses within this many feet, find out what the setback is, average that, and then you can be that or within ten feet." And it was really a sort of a non-standard standard.
Well, we, I think, and I remember discussing this, I think it was this, section seven point one on page forty-nine, it's this average depth of front yards. So what it basically says is that, when you have existing lots basically adjacent to you, you commodify the front yard depth, so you're not less than the average depth of the existing front yards on the two immediately adjoining, or in case of course not, the depth of front yard that need to join. So anyway, we've got kind of that covered, if there's, a house comes down and you want to rebuild.
Yeah.
Yeah, so...
Yeah, my question is, what I read here, that the maximum density for multiple family dwelling, fourteen, fourteen point five-two, it seems a lot. I wonder what we are, I believe I got a bit mistaken, but on the old zoning, wasn't that ten or eleven? And in that case, the, 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 the idea of the, of the size of it, instead of being three thousand and sixty-five, would have been five thousand and maybe seventy-five or eighty, so will not be on top of each other. So instead of having fourteen point five-two dwellings, we'd have either ten or eleven.
Well, I'm just going to remind you that the, it is, I believe you're right, it is a larger number.
It is a large, and that's why my...
And it was, it was purposely done. I will remind you that one of the foundations of working on this code was looking at the conference of plans adopted, and the, there was a very willful recognition of the fact that there's a tax-based issue in future revenue, and that if you got infill redevelopment, you know, what would, what would that be appropriate to be? And quite frankly, in my mind, as a planner, I think fourteen point five is low. I mean, if you're going to do high-quality redevelopment and attract a developer, fourteen and a half is going to maybe get them in the door, but they're probably likely to go for a variance. That's just the nature of, of the development game these days. I mean, we, I looked at a project this the other day, it was on, it was fifty-two units on less than an acre. Now, it's, it's an urban setting.
It's not what we want.
It's a comfort suite, yeah.
But, but, but the, but the question is, where would it be built? You have no available R2 land that's empty, right? So it's going to come through some kind of process. And would you rather be able to give someone higher density than not? I mean, again, this is purely a village, personal, you know, decision about what, what the future would be, but the numbers were derived out of the master, the master plan. It's like, we want to be able to do this. And, and I quite frankly think that an infill redevelopment at two, ten years to the acre is probably more something that you would see, you know, in a suburban setting. And I see suburban setting like, I'm thinking of a project up on Kemper, right, it's Sycamore Hatchet, where the COVID, actually, that was, I think that was maybe twelve units to the acre. So they're high-quality, good-looking structures, and the density really is not the matter, it's really a design issue. You know, it's, what does it look like, how does, how is it oriented to the street? You know, what is the character of the structure and the mass and scale and all that? I mean, sometimes we get stuck on a number, and we say, well, this is higher, this is low. And quite frankly, a lot of the places that we like to give a visit, I think are really cool places in our city, you'd be astounded by the density. So this is really what it was aimed at. It was aimed at, how do you, how can you accomplish the vision that was laid out in the Conference of Plan? If you want to lower it, it's up to you.
Well, my only concern, my, my only concern that I feel at this time, I think of the higher density, thirty, thirty years down the road, I'm never going to be here. My longevity of the family tree is very good, but you know, thirty, forty years from now may not be here. Somebody ends up having an apartment house looking there and ended up with a section eight, or it could be something like that. That's my concern with this, and I think it would be less a propensity to have something like that if you have, let's say, five thousand by eighty-five, so having more space out, having ten or eleven R1s or whatever it's going to be designed as, even if this is multiple, but just having multiples of ten would be a more of a controllable issue and less of a likelihood to end up with public housing or, or anything like that down the road. That's, that's my, 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 my voice on that.
Does anybody else have an opinion one way or the other?
I keep it at fourteen point five.
Sounds like you've got a fourteen point five versus ten question here. Fourteen point fives, please raise your hands.
I had a question.
Sure?
I don't really know enough about it, to be honest, but I figured they looked into it, and they've done a lot of research, and that's good enough.
Sounds like three on the fourteen point five side. Jeff, you have a question?
Well, I guess, it doesn't matter from the standpoint, are you better off to, in your opinion, to have a lower number and get a variance from that? If, because I don't really, as a developer, if a developer came in, I don't see them running to that little place and stopping because they feel like they hit a roadblock.
Well, the question is whether or not, and, and again, I don't know how you do business, but, you know, some folks might say, you can't vary that number, that's a cap. But, you know, could that be, does it have to be part of a zone change? Can the BCA vary it? I don't know, I can't remember exactly what their authority is, whether or not they can look at that as a variance.
Here's, here's a for instance, guys. We did a renovation over on Ironland Avenue, and we got a variance to get closer to the sideline. It was a no-brainer, just because that person wanted to stay here in Green Hills, and they were going to invest in Green Hills. And if you end up having something like that, or in, in, like you were saying, you're not going to have room to have that in development unless somebody actually tears down a whole bunch of houses and starts totally changing the footprint of this place. So, and it could, but you know what? I don't think that's going to happen now, and, but fourteen point five at that time is not going to make any difference than ten to ten.
Fourteen and a half isn't thirty, I mean, I could, I could show you the difference of all the R2, and give you some density numbers, but...
And if you, if you want to have more people, like you said, more people in this to help sustain Green Hills, which we do, because we don't have any industry, you know, and that's what the killer is, so go with a higher number, because if it does happen, that's going to be better and, and on top, but you can get a variance to make it more.
Well, and the thing I'd say is that, if you would ever, and I don't know what the goals are, I just know what was in the master plan, that's kind of the, the foundation, but if the goal, for example, is to get a senior housing facility, you're not going to get one at ten years to the acre. And, and fourteen may not be enough, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not totally sure. But you would rather have it there to offer, but you got to remember that with so little available R2 land out there, you know, you're talking about either land that the village has not owned and sell, or someone's going to come in and do wholesale, you know, you know, you're going to piece together a bunch of properties, and the village is going to be involved in the review process. And no one's going to go out and go through an entire process, and a tight community like this is going to start tearing down houses to assemble land without the village kind of being on board. So, I mean, it's one of those things where, and I don't mean to be flip about it, but it's like, I don't think it's a threat. To me, it's more of something in your toolbox that you had out there to offer a developer versus trying to attract someone, and then you say, "Well, but we're going to have to do this to get you there." I don't know.
And then so, in Maria's comment about section eight, does that number play into that at all?
I mean, the thing is with section eight, section eight is a market, it's a, they can go anywhere. I can show you single-family section eight houses, I can show you high-density, huge structures that are section eight, that's a market thing. And, you know, there's the, I mean, I, I mean, there's some in every density that there is.
Section eight can be created on grants.
No, and that's why I was saying, I didn't think they were linked together, I just wanted to find out.
No. So, can we, can we move away, it sounded like we had a general feeling we'd leave a bad note. Now, we never, are we okay with the setback at twenty feet? We can leave that as it sits and move on to the next? All right.
Okay, page one forty-three, I believe this is in the sign area, we want to see it in the book. Where purpose would be, I think, prohibited signs, another one under G. With promotional balloons filled with helium, gas, air, or even the ashes, the material, either suspended from or fixed to a structure, vehicle, or ground, it's prohibited sign style. And did you have any other suggestive warnings for that?
Well, I guess that, I was saying, that's probably covered by E.
By which one, by what?
By E of that section on page one forty-two. Signs, banners, flags, streamers, others to say, well, just to say device of nature of temporary nature, and want to advertise, or call attention to grant, or any specials. I mean, you could put a few more words in there, but I wouldn't add another section. I would, I would put the descriptive words probably there. I mean, that's what you're talking about, right?
Well, we, we want to prohibit those. All right, you know, most structures might not even be built to accommodate some of those big blow-up things.
If we do add that, I think we need to clarify promotional balloons. When I first read it, I thought of little balloons, just down at Party City.
We're talking about the big tall guy that flops all around.
And the big gorilla.
Yeah, which I'm opposed to, but also the whole thing of attaching a couple balloons. I've seen them, I think at Curbs or other places, a couple of small balloons to it.
Yeah, they did that for King's Table when they had some balloons up the lights, I don't have a problem with that. So I don't know, maybe just a little bit of, something, a size restriction or something along promotional balloon.
Oh, I guess, I'm sorry, I guess I wasn't specific enough. I mean, what, the section I just referred to, KNE, says that these certain kinds of signs can be approved by the zoning official. Is that any official, whatever? So there are things in here, to me, like streamers and flags and banners that, are they any, I'm asking a question, are they any more or less offensive than a balloon? All I'm saying is that, if you, if those, if those temporary kind of signs are things that you want to prohibit, then maybe we should be pulling some stuff out of E as well.
Yeah, because this is basically saying, an E, to your point, Todd, is the, anything to do with a grand opening, all of these things, banners, flags, et cetera, have to be approved by the zoning official.
It says, maybe, and is, and approved prior, installed prior approval. I think it covers it.
Yeah.
Okay.